Oh, let me thrill the veil of shame. Be me, oh, life, you see. And again, oh, life, it's enough, may I hear. Time look with close to thee, close to thee, close to thee, close to thee. Close to thee. Then I bid, oh, life, it's enough, may I hear. Time look with thee.
Hallelujah, let's worship the Lord, hallelujah, this Lord.
Jesus keeps me in the cross. Oh, there, the precious fountain, oh, free to all. A healing flows from from car, from his mouth. In the crossing, in the crossing, be my glory, be my glory. Oh, to my love, God so shall praise him. Be your darling.
Just lift up your hand.
In the crossing, in the crossing, be my glory, be my glory. Oh, to my love, God so shall praise him. Be your darling. Here the crossing, the trembling soul, let it drink. Love and peace for me, oh, love, when me, see what. Oh, there, the fountain, oh, Jesus, Jesus.
Worship the Lord this morning.
In the crossing, in the crossing, be my glory, be my glory. Oh, to my love, God so shall praise him. Be your darling. Oh, here the crossing, the holy book, oh, the frame is sitting. Missing, he will.
Say, Lord, help me walk from day to day.
Oh, yeah, me, oh, from day to day. Oh, with this shall.
Maybe your testimony.
Oh, in the crossing, in the crossing, be my glory, be my glory. Oh, to my love, God so shall praise him. Be your darling.
Hallelujah, let's worship the Lord this morning, hallelujah. In the cross, in the cross, hallelujah. Let us sing this song as we hand over the service to the pastor.
He's so sweet to trust in Jesus. Just to take him in his way. Just to rest upon his throne. Oh, just to know the same. Oh, Jesus, Jesus, I am found. I will be more.
Just raise your hands, hallelujah. Descend into a spirit of worship. Hallelujah.
Oh, for grace to trust in. Oh, Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. Oh, I trust.
You're just trusting this morning. Hallelujah, say, Lord, my, my heart and my soul is just anchored in you, Lord.
Precious Jesus. Oh, grace to trust in.
Hallelujah, let's just worship him. Hallelujah, all together, just in your old way. Just open up your heart and open up your soul and just open up your spirit and say, Lord, here am I, in your presence, with your, with sons and daughters of light, precious faith. You say, you just declare before God and say, I am under expectation, oh, God. I'm just looking to you this morning, the great author and finisher of my faith. The one who raised me up in this hour, the one who washed me from the spiritual amnesia that I was, I was born with, the one who opened my eyes of my understanding, the one who has drawn me by irresistible power, say, Lord, here am I, in your presence, in your Shekinah glory, oh, God, and I know in your house, in your presence, in your holiness, all things are possible, all things are possible, nothing is too hard for our living God. He's not a dead God, he's a living God, he's not a God of wood and iron and stone, he's our high priest. Hallelujah, he's our high priest that can be touched by the feelings of our infirmities. God knows how you feel, God knows how you feel, God knows what you're experiencing, God knows, God knows what you're going through in your life, he knows how to help you this morning. Hallelujah, he can direct that word right to your need and give you that breakthrough. You can go away changed. In the house of God, there is transforming power, in the word of God, there's transforming power to change you, you don't have to be the same. Hallelujah, you can be a real child of God, a real son of God, living for him, the way that he wants you to live. You can live in a way where he can be lifted up in your life and then you can draw on men unto you. You can live in a way that others will desire to have what you have. Oh, my brother, my sister, hallelujah, this is the God that we serve, he never disappoints. Jesus keeps all his appointments, hallelujah. Oh, God, help us this morning, Father. May your children enjoy a breakthrough, Father. Hallelujah, Lord Jesus, may you overshadow us in such a way, oh, God. We are just trusting and believing, Lord, that you'll minister and speak in such a way that that word will just go beyond our five senses, beyond this outer man. Hallelujah, Lord, beyond all blockages, oh, God, and contact that inner man, like Paul says, oh, God, that the inner man might be strengthened to revenge the disobedience of the outer man, Father. Bring help and strength, bring deliverance, oh, God, bring healing, oh, Jesus, to your children, oh, God, elevate their faith, oh, God, where they can speak and ask and claim what is rightfully theirs, oh, God. We have you in our, in fullness, oh, God, we don't have you in part, Lord, we have the restoration of all things, oh, God, all things, Lord Jesus. How wonderful, Father, is to be gathered up into heavenly places, oh, God, not running around, Lord, like chipmunks, oh, God, going chatter, 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 oh, God, but to be gathered up into a higher place, oh, God. May your children, oh, God, catch the current of the Holy Spirit and float into that heavenly atmosphere, Lord. We love you this morning, Father. May you bless the ministration of your word and may you bless the hearing of your word, oh, God. May that word, Father, find its abiding place in our hearts, oh, God. May we become one with that word, Father. May we see the manifestation of that word in and through our lives, dear God. May we see this revelation that we claim to have been made manifest in our lives, Father, for this world to see. Help us this morning, dear God, as we commit the service into your hands, Lord. We are so blessed to have our precious pastor Lloyd Chinamasa with us here. What a wonderful time we've been having thus far, Lord, and we continue to look to you this morning. And as our precious brother would avail himself to you, Lord Jesus, may you once again just enter into that vessel and speak, my Lord, speak, my Lord, speak, my Lord, speak, my Lord, and we'll be quick to answer thee, dear God. Lord, your word is being made flesh again in this hour, Lord. Hallelujah, Lord, not in the corporal body of our Lord Jesus Christ, but been made flesh, in human flesh, failed in human flesh again, Father. Hallelujah, and we believe, Lord, that your prophet, Brother Brandon, was the first fruit, oh, God, that was waved over the entire Omega Church, showing much more to come forth, oh, God. We believe, oh, God, we believe, oh, God, we believe, oh, God, we come against every spirit that is not of thee this morning, Father, and we cancel it and we adjourn it in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, and we ask, oh, God, that the Holy Spirit, the Holy Ghost will have free course amongst us this morning to deal with us in the way that you see fit, oh, God. Bless your precious servant, Lord, we commit him into your hands. May you have the total leaving this morning, Father. May you have the full oversight in everything that is going to be said and done. May your name be lifted up and glorified and admired for all to see this morning. We commit the service into your hands. We remember our brother's church out there in Norton, oh, God, the ministers that will stand behind the sacred desk to share your word out there, bless them, Father. Bless all the governments and helps out there, hallelujah, Lord, in the Norton Church. We thank you even for Sister Kutsi that is here amongst us, oh, God, our precious brother's wife, and Shalom and Divine and the rest of the family, we commit them all into your hands. We are trusting you, Lord, we are trusting you, Lord, we are trusting you for great things, oh, God. You said, Lord, that we should ask for big things, hallelujah, we should ask for big things, great things, oh, God, and we cannot ask, Lord, for more than what the Holy Ghost can give us this morning, Father. Bless us, Father, as we commit the service into your hands, in Jesus Christ's wonderful name, for your glory and for your honor. Amen and amen. Hallelujah. Praise his wonderful name this morning. We greet you in the lovely name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen. You may be seated for just a moment, then we'll change the order of the service. Hallelujah. Amen. Praise his wonderful name this morning again, hallelujah. We are happy to have our precious pastor, Pastor Lloyd Chinamasa, that is here with us from Zimbabwe, Norton, is here with his dear wife, Sister Kutsi, maybe you could stand. Amen. We have been having some wonderful times and wonderful services with our precious brother in different places. Our brother is married to Sister Kutsi for thirteen years, they've been blessed with two daughters, Divine and Shalom, amen, and our brother comes from the church in Harare in Highlands, and he has grown and been mentored under the ministry of Brother Joseph Chakosi. And I think most of you that are seated here knows Brother Joseph Chakosi very well, he's been a regular visitor here in Durban, especially during the early nineties, amen. Praise the Lord, and our brother is just, we are glad that he's accepted the invitation to come and just to share the word of the Lord, amen. He has a wonderful ministry, a very unique ministry, amen, very edifying to the body of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen. We thank God. Hallelujah, we thank God. You know, when God gives, he always gives us the very best. God don't give us secondhand, he don't, he only gives the best. You see, like when he gave us his son, our Lord Jesus Christ, who shared his life that we might be redeemed and we might be, we might have salvation. God gives us so many good things, he give us, you know, a faithful ministry, he give us a prophet, he give us a message, so God always gives us good things, hallelujah, and we are expecting good things from a good God, hallelujah, amen. We believe that, you know, the message of the headstone has just come down with shoutings of grace, 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 hallelujah, that's what we heard when the cloud came. Hallelujah, when the cloud came, it is him that is appearing amongst these people to confirm and prove that he is the same yesterday, today, and forever. That's why when you walk through these doors here, you can walk in, in confidence and come into his house, because you're coming to meet him, you're coming to meet a living God, this God knows the needs in your life. If you have never seen him in action, be rest assured, you will see him in action this morning. Hallelujah, if you have never seen him made real in your life, have faith, amen, you'll see him be made real in your life. You just come and say, oh, God, my soul thirsted for the living God, you just say, show thyself to me, Lord, show thy glory to me, like you showed to Moses, and I tell you, he can put you in the cliff of the rock and he can pass by your way. Hallelujah, amen, you believe that? Hallelujah, he can stop under your tree too. Hallelujah, you climb up that sycamore tree, Jesus can come, he can stop under your tree and he says, Zachary, come down, salvation has come to their house, you can take him and go to your home. You just believe, you just believe, all things are possible, amen, you'll see God in his power and his glory and you will not go empty-handed. Hallelujah. So let's just stand, we'll change the order of the service, we'll ask our precious brother to come and minister, with Alfred, we sing, it's so sweet to trust in Jesus, trust in him, hallelujah, trust in him, lean on Jesus, hallelujah.
He's so sweet to trust in Jesus. Just to take him in his way. Just to rest upon his promise. Just to know, thus says the Lord. Jesus, 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 oh, how I trust him. Oh, how I proclaim my faith. Oh, Jesus, Jesus, oh, precious Jesus. Oh, for grace to trust in him. I'm so glad, I meant to trust in precious Jesus, save your friend. And I know that the heart with me will be with me till die. Jesus, 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 oh, how I trust him. How I proclaim my faith. Oh, Jesus, Jesus, precious Jesus. Oh, for grace to trust in him. Oh, for grace to trust in him. Oh, for grace to trust in him.
Blessed be the name of the Lord. You may take your seats for a while. Greetings to you all in the precious name of the Lord Jesus Christ. We want to appreciate the Lord, just work on this only, you raise the volume on this only, not those ones, just, just my, my monitors. Want to appreciate you all in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, and I'm so happy to be back again on this poppy today. We want to appreciate so well our precious pastor, Rodney Msumi. God bless you, pastor, for the invitation, for bringing us down to Durban, we love you. May God, Lord, bless you richly and your wife, our precious sister, Msumi, they're what a kind woman she is, what a lovely sister she is, let's just appreciate her. If you were with us, you would understand why I really say that, you know, she's such a, she's such a lovely sister with hospitality and all that, a very good cook, you know, she can cook and you can eat. And we are very thankful, we've been so comfortable in their home there, it was very nice. This is our last service to be together for now, we don't know when the Lord will ever permit it to be together again, but if we don't meet again, we'll meet in the rupture. Amen. Amen, the good Lord bless you, Brother Luke, God bless you, Sister Rachel, Brother Benjamin and all the pastors' children, we love you, you're such a nice people, you've got such a nice dad, very humble, very kind, God bless you, pastor. We really appreciate that and want to appreciate my wife as well, she's a journey friend, you know, she's my, she's my friend. We are always together, amen. And we thank God for giving us wonderful times, we don't know what he has in store for us, but I am under great expectation and I trust the Lord. And the pastor introduced me with a, with my favorite song, you know how I like it, it has become like my national anthem, you know, it's so sweet to trust in Jesus, just to take him at his word, just to know, thus says the Lord. I think the three of us, me and the two brothers, we've got a better platform to start on, isn't it? Is that so? They brought the projector to the office, it had stopped working for prayer. That was a revelation. So if God can heal the projector, here it's working. Maybe you, you took another one, it's the same. If God can heal the projector, because it had stopped working, it has stopped to do what it was designed for, then we put hands on it and we pray the prayer of faith, and you come and plug it back and it starts working. This must be a good start for you, I think God did it for you, brother. The projector doesn't believe, but it's being operated by a believer and the believer has to believe on behalf of the projector. You believe for yourself, believe for your healing, believe for your baptism, what gospel baptism, believe for a miracle, believe for the salvation of your family, believe God for anything. We read that quote on Friday, believe God for anything, and it works. I was preaching somewhere, brothers, it's not yet where I wanted to be, yeah, I was preaching somewhere and the generator was giving problems, just cutting off and cutting and cutting, then I just called another brother from the congregation and said, brother, go and lay your hands on that generator there, the devil is fighting, brother, it was cutting. Then they went, the moment he started praying, the brother in the congregation, the generator started the trustees, they are just money to start the generator, and the lights came back, and there were witches in church that were causing that, and right at that time, those demons came out, they say, Satan, you are defeated in the name of Jesus Christ, we are here to preach the gospel. Sometimes the devil, if he can't get in you, he gets in the speakers, if he can't get in the preacher, he gets in the baby, you, the child begins to cry to take you outside, you just have to be in the spirit and alert and just be prayed up all the time. Let us stand to our feet and open with the word of prayer. Kind heavenly Father, we lift our hands to you, Lord, how we love you, how sweet it is, oh, God, and the Father, this morning, that we come, enter a very good foundation of believing God in all, for all things. We bless you, we thank you for the pastor, Rodney, here, his wife, children, his labors, the church, the saints that are gathered together today, we thank you for the invitation, we thank you for the meetings that have been arranged, and oh, God, and the Father, we invite you that you come, because without you, we can do nothing. Start with us, Lord, you have been with us all through the quiet time, the song service, be with us now in this most important part of the service, the preaching of the word. For the preaching of the word, Lord, cast all devils, heal the sick, Lord, faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word. May you open it to us as we open the pages of the Bible, only revelation comes from you, oh, God. Heavenly Father, we praise, we commit ourselves, the preacher that hear us, in Jesus' name, bless us together as we pray, ask your blessings with thanksgiving in Jesus' name, amen. Let's take our Bibles. We are finishing today our inspiration, the Acts of the Holy Spirit in the church. So because of that, I'll just read one scripture from the book of Acts and read other scriptures. Let's open Acts, chapter one, verse eight, the Bible says there. The pastor asked me to preach on the Acts of the Holy Spirit. He said, I'm not telling you what to preach when you come, but I feel that when you come here, can you preach for us the Acts of the Holy Spirit? I said, pastor, that's one of my favorite subjects, you know, and I really enjoy to preach from the book of Acts. Then verse eight says, but you shall receive power after that the Holy Ghost is come upon you, and you shall be witnesses unto me, both in Jerusalem and in Old Judea and in Samaria and unto the uttermost part of the world. And let's go to John fifteen, John fifteen, verse seven. If you abide in me and my words abide in you, you shall ask what you will, and it shall be done unto you. Then let's go to John fourteen, twelve. Verily, verily, I say unto you, ye that believeth on me, the works that Verily, verily I say unto you, he that believeth on me, the works that I do, shall he do also, and greater works than these shall he do, because I go unto my Father. You may take your seats. I want to speak on the continuation of the Acts of the Holy Spirit in the church. That's my title, sorry for giving you a very long title, brother. The continuation of the Acts of the Holy Spirit, amen. Then subtitle you can put there, putting the word into action by faith, amen. So you just need to believe God for his word to work in your life. All God's promises are received by faith. Every redemptive promise in the Bible is sure as it is true, as sure as heaven and earth will pass away and God's word will not pass away. You never get anything from God's promises unless you believe. Romans four, Augustine says, let it be by faith, so that it might be by grace, to the end the promise might be sure be fulfilled. So God's promises are sure, salvation by grace is sure. But the Bible says, the just shall live by faith, not of works that any man should boast, but it is the gift of God, it is the grace of God. And God has given us grace by giving us such a glorious, wonderful message that we believe and that we have today in our day. No doubt, this message of the hour will not return void. No doubt, this message, we are accomplished, that which is sent forth to accomplish in our day. If Elijah, if brother Branham was told at Ohio River, that we are sent forth to the world with a message to forerun the second coming of Jesus Christ. It's very true, brother, this message will bring Jesus Christ. This message will bring everything to an end. As he speaks about the opening of the seventh seal, he says, what is it? It ends everything, time runs out. It ends the time for this, it ends the time for that. What is that? It ends the time for sickness, it ends the time for the groaning nature, it ends the time for this, it ends the time for that. Everything which is operating under time, time has run out. As much as that is true, we only have to benefit out of it, we only receive out of it by faith. So let us have faith, let us put this word into action by faith. Let us see the word become material in our lives by faith. Faith is the substance of things hoped for, faith is the evidence of things not seen. Faith, you see it, faith is now, faith, you bring it, faith is present tense. Faith, though it's a long range vision, but you are taking things that are far off and to you is good as done. You may not know how it's going to be done, but you know it's going to be done and how. That's faith. And faith, the prophet says, you have to hold your faith unto something solid. And the solid foundation of our faith is the internal word of God, where heaven and earth will pass away. But God's word may not, will not pass away. Your problems will pass away, but God's word will not pass away. That sickness will pass away, but God's word will not pass away. Why? Because it's the word of God that makes all things pass away. It's the word of God that ends everything. It's the word of God, when the message of the hour comes, it ends everything undesirable in your life. It's ended by the preaching of the gospel. It brings the end to sin, it brings the end to sickness, it brings the end to the struggling nature, it brings the end to the suffering of the body, it brings the end to this and that. Time runs out. And time have become the enemy to your enemy. Ecclesiastic says, there's time for everything. In everything, there is a season. There's time to be sick, but the time to be sick is running out. There's time to live under privileged life, but that time, brother, has run out. In everything, there is a season and time for every purpose under the earth. I like when you go down with that scripture. It says, the rest is not to the swift, nor a bread to men of wisdom, but time and chance happeneth to all. Tell your neighbor, time and chance happeneth to all. There is a time set for you, for anything that you ever desire. You have your own season, you have your own time. What you need to do today, not to miss your time, not to miss your season, when you know, when you can catch that, that is the season for the rain to come. You prepare the things, you prepare the items to get ready for farming and you are bound to have a good, better harvest, a bumper harvest. When you miss the season, you have to catch the season power, you have to catch the season. No wonder the Bible says, recognize your day in this message, recognize the day of your visitation. When you miss your day, when you miss the day of your visitation, you miss God, because there's time for everything. And time and chance happeneth to all. He's a justy God, if he has given others chance, he has given somebody chance, he has to give you your chance as well, but you have to catch up the season, you don't have to miss your chance, brother, you don't have to miss your opportunity. How do you know? It might be God who has given the pastor the burden to arrange the meetings, so that it becomes your season. Because the rest is not to the swift, nor a bread to men of great wisdom, but time and chance happeneth to all. It's in my notes, if the Lord allows me to come to that. We are talking about the working, the continuation of the Acts of the Holy Spirit. But how does the Holy Ghost work? It's by faith, that we do all these things. It's by faith that we do everything. It's by faith that we receive salvation. It's by faith that we receive the Holy Ghost. It's by faith that we receive our healing. It's the faith that we receive our hearted desire. It's by faith we have our loved ones saved. It's by faith to have a good job. It's by faith to have a good house. It's by faith to live a victorious life. It is by faith, let it be by faith, so that it might be by grace. Until the Bible says, how can they be saved unless they hear? And how can they hear unless there's a preacher? And how can they preach unless they ascend? And when God gives us a preacher, when God sends a preacher, he is saved. And how can they preach unless they ascend? For faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God. When God sends us preachers, he is bringing them to preach the word of God. For faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word. When you receive that word, like Isaiah have said, who have believed our report? To him is the arm of the Lord reviewed. How can they be saved unless they hear? And how can they hear unless there's a preacher? And how can Chinnamasah preach unless God sends him to Durban? We need God send men to come to Durban. We need God send pastors to preach to us the word and we receive salvation. We become the church of the living God. And if faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God, I have nothing to preach today than the word of God. I have nothing new to bring you than the word of God, that you hear every day being preached by the pastor, that you hear every day being preached by your pastor. Faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word. When we want you to receive the Holy Ghost, faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word. What do we do as preachers? We preach the baptism of the Holy Ghost and you hear that, you get faith to receive the Holy Ghost. We want you to overcome, we preach victory, we preach overcoming power. You hear that overcoming power, you hear that you can overcome, you receive your overcoming power. We want you to be healed. What do we do? We preach divine healing and faith comes by hearing. Unless we preach your healing, unless I preach your healing, you will not be healed. But I want you to receive your healing. What do I do? I preach divine healing, I preach divine healing, I preach the grace of God. He was wounded for transgressions, he was bruised for iniquities, the chastisement of our peace was upon him and by his strength, you are healed, receive your healing therefore, in the name of Jesus Christ. Faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God. This very word that we are preaching, when you hear it, you receive it in your heart, you believe it. It will manifest, it will become material, it will become your healing, it will become your Holy Ghost baptism, it will become your victory, it will become your desire, your desire will materialize. But you have to preach it, brother, we have to preach your desire, we have to give you your desire by the preaching of the gospel. The preaching of the gospel, cast out devils, the preaching of the gospel addresses the needs of the people. The message of the hour came to address the needs of the people. The message never came to make us scholars, the message never came to make us bunch of intellectuals. The message of the hour addresses the need of the hour. The message of the hour addresses the end time condition. The message of the hour addresses the end time laudity spirit. The message of the hour, it's a voice of God, it's the voice of God to you today. The voice of God, the voice of your healing, the voice of your victory, the voice of the rupture, the voice of the resurrection. The message of the hour is the voice of translation. The message of the hour, if this body's one day will be tamed, will this mortal body will put on immortality. This message is a changing message. If this body will be changed in a twinkle, if an eye within an eye, in the twinkle of an eye, within a second. It means therefore, your life must be changed now before we come to the change of the body. Your health must change now from sickness to health, from poverty and suffering to live a victorious life. It's a message that brings change and the last change to happen, the last enemy to be destroyed is death. And death is at our feet. If the last enemy to be destroyed is death, we must destroy sickness in the name of Jesus Christ. The last enemy to be destroyed is death, we must destroy your poverty in the name of Jesus. The last enemy to be destroyed, cancer must be destroyed, faith, which wants to take you to a premature grave in the name of Jesus Christ. The last enemy to be dealt with is death. And death weighs your sting, oh grave, weighs your victory. Thanks be to the Lord Jesus Christ, who gives us the victory of all unclean spirits. Thanks be to God, thanks be to Jesus, who gives us the victory. And faith is our victory, faith is your healing, faith is our victory, faith is our overcoming power. By faith, we possess, by faith, we claim our healing, by faith, you receive the Holy Ghost, by faith. Someone come with faith today. Someone come with faith. Someone come with faith. Borrow your neighbor, they are faith. Say, brother, give me your faith, give me your faith, give me your faith, give me your faith and say, increase my faith, Lord. What we need today is faith. Just tell the Lord, give me your faith. Let me tell you, brother. In fact, you have faith, but us got to ignite your faith. You have faith, because faith comes by what? And you have been hearing the word, which means all of us here, we have faith. There's no one in this building without faith. But ignite your faith by the preaching of the word. Ignite your faith when you come into the presence of God. The presence of God, the coming down of the Holy Ghost comes to anoint your faith, to quicken that word, which is in your heart, for greater already is he that is in you, that word in you. You anoint it with faith, quickened by the Holy Ghost, it comes to a reality. As much as faith is contained, this building is full of faith. Because faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word. So don't tell me you don't have faith when you have received Malachi four. That's faith. Receiving brother Branham is the prophet for this generation, that's faith. Believing his message, that's faith, it's a faith message. Turning the hearts, turning the faith of the children back to the fathers. You now have the apostolic faith. It's by choice, you can go there to the sea and walk on top of it, because you now have that faith of apostle Peter, because that's what he did. It's now by choice, if you want, you go try it. I say, if you want. But thou shalt not tempt the Lord thy good. Faith is a revelation. Faith is catching the mind of God. Faith is catching the will of God. Faith is to pray in line with the will of God. Let it be unto me according to thy will. That's faith. Faith is not emotions, faith is beyond screaming, faith is beyond jumping up and down, faith is beyond shouting. Faith is a thy word. And you put some emotion into it. At thy word and put some shouting into it. At thy word and put some creeping of hearts into it. At thy word and put some jumping up into it. At thy word and put some running around into it. At thy word, at thy word and put some speaking in tongues into it. At thy word and put some hallelujahs into it. At thy word and put some glory into it. At thy word, Lord. You, you brother, you sister, when mother believed that the master had come, she never remained in the house where the auntie was. A miserable comforter, the aunt was in the house, but could not bring back Lazarus. The uncle was in the house, could not bring back Lazarus. The grandmother was in the house, could bring back Lazarus. But when mother heard that Jesus had alive, she left the house. She said, auntie, we have been together for four years, for four days and my problem was still with us. You can't help me, somebody better, yes, come, somebody better, yes, come. She left the house, she went outside. She said, Mary, Mary, come out of the house, Mary, leave the aunt alone. The master has come, the master has come, the master has come, the word has come, the pillar of fire has come, the glory of glory has come, the message of the hour has come, Elijah the prophet has come. Leave your denomination, leave your ecumenical move, leave your traditions, leave your ancestral worship. The master have come, Mary, Mary, come out of here, my people, come out of Babylon. Mary, the master have come, the master have come. We have a message today that can bring back resurrection. We have a message that can bring back God on the scene. We have received a message, we have a message that can heal cancer. We have a message that can bring down the Holy Ghost. We have a message that can heal HIV virus. We have a message that can perform miracles. The master have come, the Holy Ghost have come, the master have come, the master have come, the master have come. And mother, when they say, master, if thou have been here, if thou have been here, if thou have been with me, if thou have been here four days ago, we were not going to bury Lazarus. If thou have been here, we were not going to attend the funeral. If thou have been here, shout like that, pray like mother, pray like mother. Master! 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 If thou have been here, my brother could not have died. Master! If thou have been here, oh, Holy Ghost! If thou have been here, my son could not have gone into drug abuse. My son could not have gone into abuse. If thou have been here, my husband could not have run away. Master! If thou have been here, if thou have been here. And Jesus said, where? Where have you buried your problem? Where have you buried your problem? Let's go to the grave. Let's go to your grave. Where have you left your problem? God can still answer prayer. The letter, the greater, your testimony shall be. I say, let's go to your grave. Let's go to the grave of Lazarus. Let's go to the grave. Let's go to the grave. Let's go to the grave. Remember, Jesus, before he came to mother, he had prophesied before, this sickness is not unto death, but for the glory of God to be made manifest. Your sickness is not unto death. That high blood pressure is not unto death, but for the glory of God to be made manifest. That sugar diabetes is not unto death. Those ounces are not unto death. Those acids are not unto death. But today, if thou wilt believe, thou shall see the glory of the Lord. Let me speak and prophesy by the Holy Ghost. Let me speak and prophesy in the name of Jesus Christ. Today, if thou shalt believe, if thou wilt believe, thou shall see your healing. Thou will receive your heart's desire. Thou shall see the glory is coming down, down, down. It's coming down. Oh, the glory of the Lord is coming down. How does the glory of the Lord come down? When the saints begin to shout for the Lord to have his way. Come and begin to shout. Come and begin to praise God for what he is about to do. Come and begin to praise God for what he is about to do. Come and turn in the spirit. Shout in the spirit. The glory of the Lord is coming down. Oh, da, da, da. If the projector was healed, you are going to be healed. If the projector is healed, you receive your healing there in the name of Jesus. I don't care that sickness. I don't care your problem. I give it a sharp rebuke in the name of Jesus Christ. It's coming down, down, down. It's coming down. Oh, the glory, the glory, the glory of the Lord is coming down. Oh, when the saints begin to praise for the Lord to have his way. Oh, the glory of the Lord is coming down. Oh, da, 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 down, down. It's coming down. Oh, the glory of the Lord is coming down. Oh, when the saints begin to praise, begin to praise him, begin to appreciate the law, begin to shout hallelujah, begin to praise, begin to praise. Why sit you down and look at me as if I'm performing a drama? When the saints begin to shout hallelujah. When the saints begin to shout glory. When the saints begin to shout, thank you, Jesus. When the saints begin to praise and thank God for the Lord to have his way. Oh, Jesus, have your way. Have your way, Jesus. Oh, Jesus, have your own way. Have thy own way, Lord. Oh, Jesus! Thank you for rebuking our faith. Thank you, projector. Thank you, Episod Projector for rebuking us. It's coming down. If thou will believe today. For the Lord to have his way. Glory! If it was you, you were not going to come with the projector to where I was, to the office. Can I tell you something? Use the same faith that you used on this projector to receive whatever need you have. Because you have done that, thou shall see greater things. Who told you to come? That's the Holy Ghost. So if they didn't come with a projector, by now, would without the projector? If temptations around you gather, what should you do? Breathe that holy name in prayer. The prophet speaks of another woman. He said, to prove something to my church. She was just sitting there on the court. He said, without touching her, she stood up. The prophet said, to prove something to my church. Just type for her that quotation. To prove something to my church. This was done to prove something to this church. Now, we are busy concentrating on the title and the inspiration of the pastor, the ex of the Holy Spirit. It's already happening. So simple. When we see God here, amen, here a few days ago in our church, I would give out, I was going to preach there on Sunday, last Sunday, a week. It was now a week from last Sunday. Let's quickly go. They brought a little girl in there on a stretcher. And they called me in the night time on the road and said, the girl cannot leave. The cancer was so bad. About seventeen years old girl. She can't even get there. She's going to die. That's why the prophet said, I don't see the reason why she can be sent. Then he said, to prove something to my church. I never touched the child at all. To prove. You are going to be healed from way back at the back there. But I encourage you, if there are still front seats, come close for the shadow of Peter to strike you. To prove something to my church. I never touched the girl at all. I never as much as touched her. I walked in. Let's go. I walked in, laying on a stretcher. Do you hear that? He did what? He walked. He didn't want to touch her. But he knew as he's walking, passing by, to prove something to the church. I'm just walking. I have seen it, friends. I haven't seen it fail. Walking. Walking. But he didn't touch anybody. He said, I walked in, laying on a stretcher. Because there was other sick people. But I was contained. There were other people there. But he was just contained. He was praying in his heart. Lord, I want you to heal that little seventeen year old girl. Though there were other sick people, I was concerned about the child. Listen to the next part. To catch the spirit when I spoke to her. And she seemed like a very fine little girl. Why did he say that? He caught the spirit, was a fine spirit. I perceive that thou hast faith to be healed. He caught that. And to catch her spirit when I spoke to her. And she seemed to be a fine girl. I see no reason why. And I don't see reason why. I don't see also the reason why. I see no reason why. Where are we? That child should feel a premature grave. If you don't have faith, you are going to feel a premature grave. And I don't see the reason why you should do that. I told you, last time I walked into a hospital, there was a woman dying. And the Holy Spirit said, just join hands and wring off the bed. And this woman was dumb. She could not speak. So we went there, we rounded the bed, we held hands together. We began to pray. Then I pulled my hands off. I had to put them on her. When I did that, demons were coming out of here in a hospital. Then I said, Lord, I pray that these demons will not come in a hospital here because I will be rounded up with people here. Then I said, Lord, I pray that you heal this woman. When you heal her, it was a Monday. Then we will go home and cast out these other devils. And God honored that prayer. The woman was dying, brother. So in prayer, I said, I rebuke death in the name of Jesus Christ. And those demons came violently, wanted to take her life. So Tuesday, she was discharged in the morning. Went home. They called me on Thursday and I went there to the house. When I got there, I greeted everyone. Then she did this with signs. Then they said, oh, pastor, sorry, we forgot to tell you that she doesn't speak, but she can hear. So if you want to talk to her, she types on the phone. Then you reply back. So I said, okay, so give her the iPad, which is a little bit bigger. We see the big words. So they gave her the iPad. We could talk. I say something, she types, I read. I give back the iPad. I say something. I was three hours in the room. And they were busy looking at me, my height, my stature. And said, this young man, what are you saying? Is it true? I was just going fast. I went to a certain place, I was preaching. This happened. I went to a certain place, I was preaching, this happened. The Lord, you, this person with such a disease. I went to a certain place. And then you could tell that these people are really criticizing. I say, are you with your height? You are even younger than all of us here. And I could read that. But I kept on testifying. Jesus Christ is the healer. He's the same yesterday, today. And for the, not knowing where that was leading to. Right around three, I felt something coming to the room. That was the presence of the Lord. I said, there's a man in our day, in this generation, a preacher in America by the name of William Branham. He was visited by an angel. And the angel told him, get the people to believe you, not me. The hardest thing for a mortal to believe another mortal. Says the prophet. The angel never said to believe on the Lord Jesus Christ because they already believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. You already believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. But believe in your pastor. As long Israel believed in their prophets, they prospered. Believe in the evangelist. Believe in your pastor. Believe in the teacher. Believe in the prophet. Believe in the apostle. Believe in the five fold ministry. And thou shalt prosper. I said, so this man, this preacher, walked into a room where there was a woman crippled and very in a terrible shape. And he said, sister, do you believe that if I, William Branham, pray for you, God will heal you? She said, yes. And he said, can you turn the shandarala? The sister looked. To my humble opinion, I believe he wanted to move it. But she doubted it. Then she throw the back the blame to the prophet. Said, ah, Brother Branham, I believe you, but this now which you want to do, that the brothers can bring the projector to your office. Metals. We have left the shandarala. Brother, this issue now, it's spiritualism. To pray for the projector. And it's now running. This, be careful. These are Nigerian tricks. Ah, maybe you hear somebody online who said that, ah, Chinamasa have started now his Nigerian tricks. I don't care if you call them Nigerian tricks. To me, it's the ex of the Holy Spirit in the church. Because here is the projector. The brothers were there. We didn't put nothing, no oils from the sea. We didn't bring anything from Zimbabwe, from Nigeria, from Ghana. We just said, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Not in the name of the Father, not in the name of the Son, not in the Holy Ghost. We have done it in the name of Jesus Christ. And the projector is working. And I'm preaching in the name of Jesus Christ. I'm casting a devil in the name of Jesus Christ. I'm casting a devil in the name of Jesus Christ. I'm praying for the sick in the name of Jesus Christ. In line with the message of the hour, came by the prophet of Malachi four. The twentieth century prophet. So the sister said, that's now spiritualism. Then the prophet within some seconds, the Holy Spirit helped him. He said, ah, no sister. It's not spiritualism. I'm trying to test your faith. But let's say it's spiritualism, sister. Do you know and understand that those also that practice spiritualism, they must have faith for their juju to work? I have dealt with witches and prayed for witches, a lot countless of them. One time I was preaching in Manikaland there. And there was a boy into witchcraft in church. And he was doing things and I could not preach, could not have a breakthrough. I tried to go this angle, no one saying amen. I tried to say, people stand up and say, hallelujah. They were just folding arms and staring at me. I'm a caliber which doesn't want to preach to people who are like zombies. I want to preach to people who say once in a while, hallelujah! Amen, hallelujah, thank you, hallelujah! Oh glory, hallelujah, yes! Because I'm not performing, this is not a stadium. I've come here to worship. You come to church, you fold your arms, you're folding your blessings. So I began to really preach. I was all over the round hat. And I began to rebuke witchcraft and these devils and cultists and formalities. Then I started seeing demons coming out from the people. People rolling, screaming, I said, right. Now we are in church. We are here to be set free. We are here to receive our healing. We are here to receive the Holy Ghost. We are here to shout, hallelujah! Shoes or no shoes? Don't hesitate, if somebody have promised you shoes, if you don't say amen outside, they will give you a pair of shoes. You tell them, shoes or no shoes? Hallelujah anyhow! All of you who are not saying amen, I want to know what were you promised to be given after this service, that you not say amen? Maybe I promised a jeep or a city's pants. Just say pants or no pants, hallelujah anyhow! Hallelujah anyhow! So after the service, the pastor of the church went to my pastor and said, pastor, there's a boy here who is misunderstood. And the pastor said, go to him, to brother Lloyd there, then he came. I said, young man, we are tired, we want to sleep, we're driving seven hours. I want to know what kind of demons are working on you? He said, witchcraft. I said, you are doing it with who? He said, with Granny, she's three houses away in my aunt. I said, what do you use? He said, some snakes and this and that. I said, okay, that's fine. Let's go and sleep, I will not pray for you. You bring all your items tomorrow and we have a showdown. So we went to sleep in the house, I was in my bedroom, he was giving his bedroom. Brother, that boy came out of the house when all the doors were locked by the spirit. He went to the grandmother. Then the grandmother said, ah, young man, you have exposed us to Chinamasah and your pastors there. We can't work with you, the connection is broken. But I want to tell you something, young man. If you decided that you want to worship with them, because those men, we can't, we can't deal with them, we can't overcome them. But you, because you have exposed us. If you want to join them, then mean business. If you don't mean business, you are gone. Because of what you have done. So tell me, have you decided to follow Jesus? He said, I've decided. He said, go back and get in the house. The doors were locked, he came back. Early in the morning, I said, go to take, to bring your things. So he went, he came with a coat with some black and white sports stripes, a T-shirt, black and white, a hen, a live chicken, black and white, a plate and something like, you know, like a cooking stick which is used to, to, to cook, you know. But not just cooking, it's like a spoon, a wooden spoon like. Then, and some things. Then I said, what do you use the handful? He said, this one, we use the wings. When we get into the house and the chicken hiss the person with two wings, you won't come out. You are gone. I said, what about the coat? He said, we roll it. Like this. Then we sit right on top and we fly. And this, and a broomstick is to... Like we are always... When you want to turn, you do this and the thing turns. They've got their own GPS. Then he says, pastor, there is congestion in the night up there. Not of Emirates and South African airways, no of us. And I was, I was taking him a video. He's on video, I recorded him. Because I, I didn't want people to say I was telling stories. I needed proof. I was looking at him, I said, Lord, help us. This guy is operating the third pool in the fourth dimension. We are busy, the third pool in church and we can't operate it. This guy can fly without booking any ticket, without paying any money. And we are busy using the Emirates and these things. This guy is writing for free. It challenged my faith and it must challenge your faith, brother. I said, young man, why do you come? Why do you bother yourself to get in the buses and pay to come to Harare? He said, the problem when we learnt, we are not supposed to be seen. Our things must be done in secret. But now in Harare, because people, they don't sleep. They are everywhere, so... But at the places where it's not crowded, we go, we don't get, we don't go by buses. We don't waste money. I said, right. So the pastor says, brother Lloyd. So I asked the pastor's mother, I say, give me a knife to kill this chicken. Then the pastor said, not in my yard. Take your boy. Go down there to the... Do your things. You know, if you go back to the book of X, we are already in the X of the Holy Spirit. They came with their curious arts to power. Curious, those were not funny things. No, they were, they were things and Paul says, I fought with the beasts at Ephesus. Was it at Ephesus? He fought with the hyenas. You were there at Berya, isn't it? I think you were there in Berya, in Berya, in Johannesburg there, I was preaching. The pastor says, let's run a prayer line. I was tired, I didn't want to run a prayer line. Then the pastor said, you must pray for the people. I said, pastor, but I'm tired, you know, I've been preaching. Yesterday, I preached five hours. I said, I run my prayer line whilst I'm preaching. If people have faith, the Holy Ghost will lead men, say pray for that one, that one, that one, that one, then I'm done. Then he says, no, sometimes you miss others. I want the people to be helped. I said, okay, that's fine. I said, but I'm not going to pray, I'm just going to lay hands. A fast line. He said, that's fine. Then I said, okay, you make two lines, I'll go this way and you run this other line. So I took the line to the right and I just began to just lay hands on the people. Then I went to a certain sister. The moment I laid my hands on her, she was standing upright like this. Then immediately, I saw her down to her knees. Then like this, she began to crawl like an animal and going to the back of the church. So I was following and I was praying, I said, Lord, what's, what's? What kind of spirit is this? And I was just praying and she was crawling, going. Now, because she went to hit the wall, there was no more space to go. She was at her dead end. And I was some few steps away, then I said, Lord, what's this? The Holy Ghost said, that's witchcraft. She changes to be an animal. You know, I didn't pray. I just went there and I didn't want the people to, to hear the prayer, that it was witchcraft. I just went there and opened, just went to her ear. I said, witchcraft, you spirit that changed there to be an animal in the night, come out and it left here. I just spoke to it. That was the simplest demon. One of the simplest to cast out in my life. Never sweated. Because the Holy Spirit was in the waking. And it picked exactly what it was. It left here, she stood up, she was walking. So we were walking down the field with that boy, something said, don't kill the chicken, the hen. The moment you'll be cutting its neck, you hear that your child is dead in Harare. Don't touch it. You let him kill his own things. So we got there, we had some matches, some petrol. I said, young man, you are going to kill your own hen. He took this. I said, yes. I'll just help you. Let us pray, we prayed. I said, you do this, you come after me, holding the knife. Then he did it, cut it the thing. Then we burned it, put some petrol. Brother, that thing was hard to burn. To prove we're dealing with spirits and devils. The mother was diagnosed HIV virus when she didn't have. She say, he said, we, we used one of our snakes to strike her. You can go to the hospital, the doctors will pick wrong things. Now, when you decide to be a Christian, be one. Because those that are into things, they are real and they've got the real magic. If they want your leg to come up here, they will do it. In days' time. So I was in this house. Then we began to talk. Then the prophet says, they have to use faith for their things to work. Then the prophet said, look here sister, and he looked with deep concentration. And the thing moved. And the faith of the sister raised. Why am I sharing this testimony to you? I'm raising your faith. That you receive your healing. If you don't have faith, you come and touch the projector. Because it's working. Something that you really know. Or else maybe you doubt this brother that they didn't come, maybe they paid me some money at the back. How many saw them coming with the projector? Did you know what they were going with it for? Oh, you know, it's working. Now, when I said that in that house, everyone looked at me. I said, just like this bulb, we turn it to turn. You could feel the people's minds saying, yeah, started now. But friends, to be honest with you, I don't know what could have happened. So I looked at the bulb and I stood there. I said, but friends, what use? And what benefit did we get to turn that bulb there? When we've got somebody who is dumb, who can't speak? Why can't we take the same faith and the same power which is need to turn the bulb? The same faith and the same power used to, to turn on the projector and put it on somebody dumb or deaf or blind or crippled and see what will happen? So it was like a good idea to everyone. Then I said, let's pray for the woman. Went to lay hands. Those demons from the hospital started coming on. Then she was violent, she wanted to beat me big time. So I had to call them, oh, four ladies heavy, to hold it tightly. Then I said, let's put her on the mattress there. We went into her spare bedroom, I was the last to enter in. I was told what to rebuke. So I went there, I rebuked it right there. I saw her opening her mouth. And the tongue was getting loose little by little. Then a voice said, I'm letting her go for the first time. So I saw myself pointing in the air and it was said, it is done. Then I walked about three steps, I heard myself saying, it is done. Then I was walking in the corridor to go back to the lounge there. So when I was walking, I said, who is speaking here? It is done. I realized I was prophesying. So everyone came, took their places. Then I asked that woman, she, she had a son, firstborn called Terrence. So they say, my Terrence, they call you by the name of your child. So I said, how many children do you have? So she lifted her four fingers to illustrate, four. I said, no, you can speak. She said, four. Then I also said, ah! Everybody in the house saying, ah! Can you say, ah? Can you say that, ah? I am healed. Ah! I don't feel the pain anymore. Ah! You are not too sure about what you are talking about. Should we close now, pastor? Yes. What time are we supposed to close, to go for break and come back? They're supposed to close before twelve o'clock, isn't it? Eleven o'clock? Twelve? Okay. Just give me some few minutes. And that woman began to speak instantly. Brother Joseph? Ah! Listen to this. Let's talk about somebody who had faith. We'll close on this quotation because we can't finish them all. I, I didn't even preach on what I wanted to preach here. John fourteen, we'll come back in the afternoon. We don't preach till finish. The next morning, the prophet was speaking about in Finland there, where he went. And two years before, he had seen a vision of that dead boy coming back to life. How many remember the story? There were eight, two of them, isn't it? Then they were on top of a hill or something. Then suddenly, they saw just people coming together in haste. Then one said, what's going on there? They said, let's go down and see. And they got there, it was an accident. Then, as they were there, the prophet began to feel so funny. You know how you used to feel when the angel of the Lord comes near? His face could change. We must have feel something when we come to church. We must have feel the presence of God because we are not in a beer hole. When you're in a beer hole, you are afraid that maybe somebody will throw the bottle and hit you in the head there. You must have feel something, that a sweet spirit, such an anointing. So he began to feel it. Then, but there was a woman who identified him, identified the prophet, identified him. She said, let's see what this American evangelist will do about it. And God didn't want to be challenged. Then the prophet asked and said, what did she say? Because she said it in Finnish language. Then the interpreter said, she is saying, let's see what the evangelist, American evangelist would do about this. No doubt she had heard about miracles and she thought it was a lie. She had heard that brother Branham once prayed for the dead and they came back to life and she thought it was a lie. But that day, she challenged God on the wrong day, there was a vision. Your enemy has challenged you on the wrong day. There are meetings arranged for your healing today. Meetings are arranged, prayers have gone further, fastings have gone further. In the name of Jesus Christ, I challenge you to believe. In the name of Jesus Christ, I challenge you to receive your healing. I'm not telling you stories here. We are in the presence of Jesus Christ. You are going to be healed because God is the healer. You are going to be delivered for God to prove his word. I don't care your complication, even if you are due for an operation. You will receive your healing today. Receive your healing today. God can bypass the operation! Yes, I feel that. God can bypass the doctor's operation. God can bypass the theater. If thou can believe, if thou can believe it, if thou can receive it. Then brother Branham began to realize, I had seen this tone before. I have seen this view before. Looks like I've been to this place, looking like I've been here before. What's going on here? The Holy Ghost reminded him, this is the day, this is the hour for that vision to be fulfilled. Something is fixing to happen. Something is about to take place. Oh, come on church, come on Deben! Something is fixing to happen. Something is about to happen. Get ready! Get ready! Look in your Bible, search in the scriptures for they are they that testify of your healing. Search in the spoken word. Open your Bible, see what's written for this day. And I can assure you, brother, I can boldly tell you, something, 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 something great, something good, something big. It's fixing to happen. Something is 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 about to take place, brother. Get ready! I say, get ready! Prepare for the move of the Holy Ghost, right on your bench there. We saw it yesterday at Ukoma's there. I saw people struck by the power of the Holy Ghost. I saw women, both black and white, under the power of the Holy Ghost. The Holy Ghost is not for white men. The Holy Ghost is not for the preacher. The Holy Ghost was not for brother Branham. The Holy Ghost is to the believer. I said, something is going to happen there. You believe God right on your chair there. You believe God right on your seat there. You receive your healing right on your seat there. If you can believe it, you feel the healing power coming right into your body right now. I say, receive your healing from your back act in the name of Jesus. Receive your healing from that back act, that back problem. I condemn it in the name of Jesus Christ. When I came, when we were Johannesburg, the, the day after I arrived, I was picking some shirts in my suitcase, just like this. Brother from Norway, a sharp sound came, pah! Brother from Norway, a sharp sound came, pah, right here. And I knew I was gone. And there was no more coming to Deben. I just said, Lord, help me, that I don't fall down right now. Just help me. I managed to say, I said, honey, I'm gone. Then I managed to stand. Then I began to pray. I said, Lord, I don't know which way to turn, which way to move, but my back. Then, the pastor was supposed to preach, said, I've got flu, it can't go. Pastor tell persons not to preach, and I'm in that condition. I just said, Lord, I didn't come here to be admitted. I didn't come here to go in a hospital. And we haven't start. There is Deben. There is pastor, what am I going to tell him? I said, I'm going to preach. With such a sharp pain! I went, brother, people never noticed that I was terribly sick. Only the brother who was driving me, he could see that I had to hold on his Mercedes Benz to get there, sit and try. When I'm standing up, I had to hold on someone there and just come slowly up. And making sure I don't let the people see it. Then I walked through the poop there. Brother, the anointing came, I was all over the place. Hallelujah! Thank you, Jesus! Oh glory, hallelujah! The next day, I was feeling much better. The third day, I was perfectly healed. Now I can do this. It's gone. No tablet, no nothing. Divine healing. Say divine healing. I believe in divine healing. My father is the healer. My father is the provider. My father is the baptizer. My father is Jehovah's child. Do you know God is your father? Didn't he say, when you pray, say, our Father, who art in heaven? Hallowed be thy name! Thy healing power come! Now, the prophet said, open your Bibles. They opened the Bible. Said, can you read at the back of your Bible what I told you two years back home? The brother read, said, there will be the resurrection of a boy struck by an automobile. He will come back to life. He will be wearing some blue things, the place will be with these stones, mount, stones like this and that. He says, brethren, the vision and the situation have come to match. You know, the prophet never screamed. He knelt down there. And this woman was watching to see what the American evangelist was going to do about it. And I want you to know, God, you've got something to do about it. God, you have something to do about your situation. The neighbor is watching to see what will happen. What, God, oh, they just go to church every day. They've been in church the whole week and others were going to work. Ah, God, you do something about it, pastor. God, you do something about your labors. God, you do something about your efforts. God, you do something about it! He just knelt, said, heavenly Father, according to the vision that you showed me back home, I saw this boy coming back to life. Then he stopped. Then he left the other part of the Lord's Prayer. When you pray, say, our Father, you give him glory. There's no one like you, who art in heaven. Then he was now in, thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. Here now. It's not just a repetition of prayer. You go stage by stage. Go stage by stage on that Lord's Prayer. You start by worship. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thou art the king of kings. Glory! You find one hour, you are on that path. I'm teaching you how to pray five hours. Then you come, thy kingdom come. Let the sick be healed. Send us ministers. Give us the Holy Ghost. Give us this day. Give us our message. Speak to us directly to what we are going through in our day-to-day life. For thy is the kingdom. The power and the glory. When you come forever there, three hours. Then you sign the cheque. It will not bounce. Because the money is full there in the account. In Jesus' name. Amen! And so shall it be. Then he left, he said, death! You can't hold this boy anymore! I claim his life back! In the name of Jesus Christ! What I still don't understand until now is this. When this boy resurrected, they didn't add more blood at the hospital. But there was splash of blood on the floor. What I don't understand until now, he was never put any plaster, both legs and hands. But the bones were there on the tar. When he resurrected, he was a healthy boy. Full of blood. Full of life. With his clothes on! And he went home straight. It was unfortunate. They said that the ambulance doesn't carry the dead. Unknown to the ambulance driver, they quickly took away another child in a coma. The ambulance, what many can do? They came to help this one. But the ambulance left your man. Left a boy that God raised. Another ambulance came emergent from heaven. The Holy Ghost's power came wee 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 right down from glory. Ah, come on, the Holy Ghost is coming from glory. The power of God is coming right to you, brother. If you don't have a brother to help you, the Holy Ghost, God is our refuge and strength. A very present help in a time of trouble. A present healer in a time of sickness. I hear the sirens. I see the flashing red light. The coming of the anointing of the Holy Ghost sweeping through the building. I hear the sirens' sound of the Holy Ghost. I hear good Holy Ghost field, amen! And hallelujahs, come on, brother. Come on church. Come on sister. Come on brother. Come on sister. Encourage yourself there. Encourage yourself. Encourage yourself. Encourage yourself on the wings of the snow white dove. God sends down his pew. Sweet love! Sweet Holy Ghost! Swing low! Sweet chariot! Coming to take me home. There's an emergency here. There's someone in an emergency situation. There's someone about to die in here. There's someone in an emergency. Receive your visitation. There's an emergency here. There's an emergency. There's an emergency in your home. If God doesn't come, you're going to run out of food. You're going to be kicked away from where you are staying there. There's an emergency. There's an emergency. There's an emergency. House of hell! Give way to the name of Jesus. House of misfortune! Give way to the name of Jesus. I feel the emergence. I feel the agents. I feel the emergence. Unless he comes, you'll be buried within three months. There's an emergency here. There's an emergency here. Come and believe in God. Come and believe God for your salvation. Believe God for your healing there. I hear the sound of the ambulance coming to pick someone, to take them into an emergency room there. My situation is an emergency. My situation is an emergency. I want God now. My condition is an emergency. The situation at home is an emergency. The situation in my camp is an emergency. God must intervene now. I want the Holy Ghost to come my way. I want the Holy Ghost to address my papers. I want the Holy Ghost to address my permits. I want the Holy Ghost, it's an emergency. It's an emergency. Get into an emergency. Get into an agent. Get into an agent. Get into an agent. Make haste! Oh brother, you don't have that agent. Maybe you don't catch it, you don't have that agent. But the ambulance left the place where help was going to come to. The mother with the other boy, she was not inspired just to take a break. But it was an emergency still. But let me show you what he did. It became more of a miracle not to the resurrected boy. It became more of a miracle to the other boy in coma. I want to show you what you've never thought in life. You are going today to create your own miracle by your faith. If God helps me, if he allows it, I will share with you the same testimony on that same court. The next morning, they were sitting there again. So Miss Isakson said, would you speak to them yourself about this other mother and father? Okay, let's quickly go right on top. Then this other little baby was in the hospital dying. On the next day, the next morning, this mother, father, or the other little boy had a collusion of the brain. He could never come to himself. The fender hit him right under the chin and turned him over and rode him across the road. And he hit on the other kerbing and up from the kerbing in, it smashed him upside of a tree like that. He never come to his. His blood was from his ears and eyes and mouth. The poor little fellow. You're looking for it, isn't it? Okay, let me give you where you, did you get it? The message is the angel of God. You got it here. I think you can all see it. Then he says, he would never come to his, blood was all over his ears and eyes and mouth. The poor little fellow. Paragraph eight there. And the mother and father were just frantic. They were young Finnish people. They were what? Frantic. Do you understand? They were just screaming. They were not settled. It was an emergency. They were not folding their arms and hands, their legs and hands. They frantic. That frantic thing was an act of faith. They were trying to work out their faith. They were screaming. How can that be? If that boy is raised back, we left him, we saw him dead. If he came back to life, our boy must come back. This is the only child we have. We are a young couple. There's an emergency here. We don't have another child. Lord, let this child not die. Oh God, my child is on the saving machine. They were frantic! And you don't want to become frantic. To be frantic. Good help us to be frantic. They were young Finnish people and they were trying to come for me to go down at the hospital. It's against the rules. And the manager, don't let me go from one place to another. Because if you do that then, if you go to go to this place and not this place, it causes a feeling. So they just put them all in the church at one time. And there, the Spirit of God operates from there. Bring your problem to church! And there, the Spirit of God will operate from there. Now the Spirit of God is operating from here. So they had to do that overseas. And I'll never forget this. Mrs. Isakson, she said, Brother Branum, I tell you, those people are about to turn me round. She could not control them. And that night when they come in, there was this little mother and father sitting on the steps. They had to drag me over them to get in. They was almost to pull my coat off. And others standing on the street. I thought, oh, what is it? Brother, they, the prophet had to walk wisely. Otherwise, he was going to be a man with always tattered shirts and suits and garments because of the faith of the people. I went to a certain place and I thank God the poop, it was right up, right on top. And there was some bars. I was preaching, people were jumping from there, touching my hand like this. They were like pulling me. And they were receiving their healing like that. I had to hold on the bars. I'm telling you the acts of faith, frantic people. You never get nothing in folding arms, brother. You can when others are preaching, but not mainly if I'm preaching. You have to be a little bit insane or frantic like. Yesterday, there was a sister, what's her name there? Ah, you thought she could hit the poor brother. She was everywhere, an Indian sister there in, ooh. Ah, that one I enjoyed. I really enjoy such people. If I can just have ten like those in the service, we go in the rapture. She was everywhere. She could come right there, straight running and praising, shout. She goes there, I said, right, that's my caliber there. That's, that's, that's my fiber. You do that and see what will happen. I'm telling you. You don't need to go anywhere for help. It will be done right there. And that night when they come in, they were just little. Then he says, she said, that's the mother and father of that little baby. They want you to go at the hospital. The next morning, they were sitting there again. Do you understand faith? Do you see the picture? Let's not just read these quotations and leave them there. Apply it in your life. Go into action! Do what this woman did and see what will happen. Do what Blind Bat Mias did, see what will happen. Do what- Do what John Ryan did, see what will happen. Everybody here, keep quiet! Thank God I can see. Extra, extra, you can read what's in the paper today, but as you go, you must know, I can see. Definitely, you become, you become also in the news and say you've run out of your mind. Definitely, definitely, yes. But you, you must go ahead and run out of your mind. Brother Branham says, we need more nuts. If they call you a nut, there's no car which can drive without nuts. Nuts are very important on the wheel. We need those people, those sisters like that one there. Go ahead, sister, jump and run everywhere in the place. We need more nuts in the church! Go ahead, go ahead, be a nut! Somebody was wearing a T-shirt and saying, I am a fool of Jesus. But then the pastor said, and whose fool are you? I'm a nut for Jesus, I'm ever excited, I'm a holy roller. We need back the holy rollers in the church to see the working of the Holy Ghost. The Holy Ghost doesn't just work with gentlemen. It needs people who are ready for anything, who are ready to be criticized. Until we are criticized, we are not yet there. Unless you're criticized, unless your faith is broken against, you are not yet there. You need to come to a place where you kind of lose your mind in the scriptures. Now, I was preaching in Rustland back there, there was a sister was totally blind, stony blind, they said. The pastor sent me the texts there. I will send you pastor and you read to them. He said, pastor, don't worry if, if you didn't see much about anything. That sister, you shook your hand, she was stony blind that day. Within 10 minutes, I shared the testimony of where I was preaching. People were receiving their sight, the opening of the eyes. To a point, I went to a certain church to preach. There was a sister who was crippled, she didn't come to church. Then the pastor took the audio, that message is called, there's a possibility. Then she, he, the pastor sent the audio on the group. And the sister was listening to the audio, just preached a few minutes. And everything was threatened. Then there's a brother with an outreach group from that church. He didn't come with the rest of them to the meetings. Then after two weeks, he said to the church, we were supposed to have gone to the meeting, but we could not make it because of the logistics. But anyway, I just feel led by the Holy Spirit to play one of the sermons that Pastor Chinamasa preached. And that sermon that he picked, I was sharing more of the healing of eyes. People taking off their spectacles, they could literally feel eyes popping out and they could feel that something has happened. They open their eyes, they can see. There was a woman who was totally blind for three years. Now, this brother is playing the sermon in church on Sunday. The moment I started sharing testimony of the healing of eyes, there's a sister who was blind for two years. They are listening to a sermon on tape, her eyes came open instantly. It's the acts of the Holy Spirit. Not two feet from where I'm standing right here is the ground where healings took place. Not two feet away from where I'm standing here, miracles took place. If Jesus Christ is the same yesterday, today and forever, what he did there and that, no doubt! You may be surprised that this church, in that, that day, 1951, there might be people who were overflowing right up to here and they were receiving their healing from all over the place. Have you ever read where the prophet preached somewhere, it was a tent meeting? He preached and somebody missed the deaths. They came when the tent was folded. They came there and people say, where are you going? He said, for the meetings of Brother Branham, said, they left, they were healed, on the, standing on the ground. But now, we don't want a creed where we can all go and stand in the ground. Yes, God did that. But let's bring it from the ground. Because he was doing it by the scriptures. Because you can go and stand there for years without revelation and you'll not get nothing. But you claim the God of William Branham, the God who healed in Deben. And when Deben, what is done before, he's able to do it again. There are people who went to America to sit on the grave of Brother Branham. Some, they took the soil, they ate it, they did things, brother, but it didn't help. They didn't believe him when he was here, they didn't believe his message. They listened to the tape, they don't do what the tape says. You can go and eat that soil, brother, and you have problems in the stomach there. So, you are telling me you, you want to eat the prophet? It's like he wanted to eat his arms and everything. If you are going to eat the soil, it is grave, what are you trying to do and say? I'm not saying it's wrong. Some, they go there with, come with a piece from the grave, put it in the home. The prophet will not resurrect, he will resurrect when the rapture time comes. He left us not his grave. You are taking us back to what the prophet used to say. They are claiming, I have the right nail, that nailed Jesus at the cross, until they've nine hundred nails. And everyone claims that is the real one. Now, which one now, because there were only two nails then, or just maybe two here for the hands and the legs, about four? Not, not more than 20 nails at the cross, isn't, how many were there? Now, if you have nine hundred, no doubt among those nails, there's the genuine one. But if it was going to be nails, were we going to break them to give everyone in the whole world for generations? He didn't leave us nails, he left us the Holy Spirit. Sometimes it's good to take the spoken word and put it under your pillow. But eat the book. And professor, you do it by the leadership of the Holy Spirit, that don't make it a creed. I've seen ministers, ministers who can take the Bible, cast out demons and put it and press it on somebody. Come here, brother. Come, brother. Seten, come out in the name of Jesus. This Bible was printed in China by a Chinese with his machines making money, he doesn't believe in your God. But what's in there? The letter killeth, but the Spirit giveth life. You know why the prophet's Bible was lifted up right on the pulpit in the time of the flood? Because he was a believer. If he are not a believer, yours will burn. It's paper material. It was God honoring the faith of his servant and preserved his Bible to prove that it's his word. God keeps his word. Now, if you read the scripture, we say eat the book, you, you, you cut the pages of the Bible and you eat them. You are not rightly dividing the word of truth. Read that word, take it into your heart, then speak that word. Let it come from the pages of the Bible. Amen? The prophet at Mark 11. I said, the prophet at Mark 11. I will not explain because of time. The next morning, they were sitting there again. So, Miss Isakson said, would you just speak to them yourself for a few moments? I said, get them in the hall. And they got in the hall out there and they went to them and they said, oh, come heal our baby. Do you hear the language of a frantic person? Come heal our baby! It's dying, it's dying. About three days, it never come to itself. I said, I can't heal your baby. This is all through an interpreter. I said, I can't heal your baby. Said, well, you healed the other one. I said, no, Jesus healed the other baby, not me. I had nothing to do with it. I said, over in America, he showed me a vision a year ago that this little baby would be brought back from the dead. He never showed me your boy. He's balancing the frantic. You do your frantic things and it will balance you and watch what will happen. Then he said, I said, no, Jesus. And they said, oh, yes, oh, see a vision far by. Jesus Christ, the same yesterday, today and forever. See a vision for our boy. See a vision for my son. See a vision preacher. I said, well, I can't see a vision in Malaysia. I said, I only see them as God will permit them to be seen. I said, you pray! You want someone to prophesy about you, you pray! You want someone to speak in tongues and the interpretation come, you pray! You want the preacher to see a vision about your life, you pray! You become frantic, you pray! I saw this quotation fulfilled literally when I was preaching. As I came to this quotation, I just began to say, see a vision for my son. I said, pray like that pastor, see a vision for my son. And there was a sister with a child with hernia in the church. And I was just up and I said, see a vision for my son, see a vision for my son, see a vision for my son. Then she began to believe, said, Lord, I want Pastor Chinamasa to pick this hernia. She began to say, see, quietly. Then the baby began to cry and she was forced to go out and to nurse the baby. Then she went outside, she prayed, said, Lord, how can the devil be so cruel like this? I want the preacher to pick this hernia, to see a vision for my son. And I'm just on that quote, I stopped preaching everything. I was just saying, see a vision for my son, see a. Then she just said, I'm going back to church. And she just came there, never went to her seat. She came right straight to the pulpit and she was walking, holding the baby. And I'm a visiting preacher, I don't know nothing there. And she's coming, she stood right there. I said, that hernia is gone, I rebuke it in the name of Jesus Christ. Ah, come on, see a vision for my son, see a vision for my son. Jesus Christ, the same yesterday, today and forever. Don't ask me how it happened. She prayed, you can pray, you can pray and you not go for an operation. I am telling you how to do it. Then I was sending it to another sister, into another church. There was another sister and at that time, that sister was outside with a boy, nursing him and had hernia and she was by the window. And I began to share about the testimony of this sister having a child healed from hernia. Then I was told by another deacon who started seeing him. She just stood up, she began clapping hands there, outside. Then it came so powerful on her. She came in with a baby, nailed there, either, either old. I don't know nothing about it, that the baby of God hernia. I was pointing at her, said, receive the healing of your child from hernia. We will not go for an operation. And was due for an operation the next week. The hernia disappeared. I think in the same, I said, well, I can't see visions in Malaysia. Let's keep on going. They went when she said, she just couldn't. Okay, let me read from my own. And they said, oh, yes. I said, you pray. They went when she just couldn't understand it. And I said, ask Miss Isakon, ask him if my boy is going to die. I said, I do not know. She said, well, come down at the hospital and ask God to heal him and things. She said, we can't, I said, I can't do that. And then I asked them, I said, you are Christians? No, neither one of them was a Christian. I said, well, look, if God takes your little child home and you, and die, and you die a sinner, why you can never see him no more? And if the little boy, God takes him up to heaven and you die a Christian, give your hearts to God and die a Christian. You can go up home to heaven with your little boy and never have another accident up there. That's one thing, thank God, and I said, there won't be any accidents up there and you will live forever and ever. But if you don't, you will never see your little boy no more if he dies. And said then, if you wanted a favor from me, you try to do something for me. And if you want a favor with God, do something for God. And I said, why don't you give your lives to God? And they sin, they couldn't lose on that. Ah, thank God for the prophet. How many have given their lives to Jesus Christ? How many has not done it, who wants to do it today? Wants to give their life to the Lord Jesus Christ? Then he says, they could not lose on that. Because they would be Christians. If the little boy died well, they would go home with him. And if he didn't die, perhaps they would find favor with God and he might live. So, they got down on their knees. You see, they are acting right there according to what they are being told by the word. So, they got down on their knees and they gave their life to Christ. And when they got back up, the little mother, it sounds like a joke, but I don't believe in telling jokes from the platform and here. But it wasn't joke, she jumped up and ran over to me, hysterically. And she said, with Miss Isakson head holding her, she said, see a vision for my son, for my boy. I have given my life to God, then see a vision. I have repented, then let God bless me. Speak something about me, speak something about me. I am baptized in the name. She wanted it so quick! Don't be 10 years in the message without God doing something for you. We want it so quick! Don't be 20 years in the message without experiencing the power and the move of God in your lives. I want it so quick today! I have done what I'm supposed to do, let God do the rest. I have taken him at his word, let him perform the rest. I have done what I'm supposed to do as a Christian brother, as a Christian sister. God must come and fulfill his part. Let's all stand to our feet. I wish you could have all done it before I told you what we were preaching. And I ask you to do it when we come for the second service. Come, brother, and lead us into a worshiping song. Who will do that? Come, the song leader. She said, see a vision for my boy. I said, I don't know. She said, come down here. I said, no, God can show me in my room, just the same as he can down there. And she said, go in and see a vision for our boy. Pastor, as we are closing the first meeting, go in in the meditation room. Come back with something directly for me. Go in there, she wanted it. Go in there, she wanted it right there. I said, she said, "Now, I can't make God show me a vision. Now, he may never say one thing to me. And if he does, I will tell you. If he doesn't, well, I can't." And that's all what we just have to do. We want to speak where God has spoken. When he is silent, we'll be silent. But I want to say, friends, the woman's faith caused God to give a vision to the prophet. The other child, God sovereignly gave the vision of the resurrection of the boy. But the other child, the vision was asked and the vision came. The Bible says he must needs to pass through Samaria. There was something inside of that Samaritan woman that caused Jesus to come down his way. I want to ask you, brother, sister, is there not a cause in your life, in your situation that can cause the Holy Spirit to come and strike all over the building? Are you not in a situation? Are you not in an emergency? Are we not in a fix today? Let's look in our conditions. Let's search our hearts and our lives. See where we are and where we are supposed to be. The prophet says the bride is living million miles under privilege of the things that they are supposed to be enjoying. We can't even say amen in church. When to the ball games, it's hallelujah. You go to the racecourse, there are whistles, they are like the horses can hear. They actually say, "That's my horse." They do betting and everything, "This one will be number one." They scream, they shout. Why can't we encourage the preacher, the pastor? Why can't we support his vision of the meetings? Why can't we support him in prayer and fasting? When we come to church, why can't you say, "Lord, let the pastor even call my name and my situation by the Holy Spirit?" And I tell you, those things are there. And so she said, "Well, we wait, you go in." That was mighty sweet. But you know, you can't do those things. So Miss Isaacson finally got them to leave. And I went in the room and about 20 minutes, they called up and said, "Yes, God showed the vision." I said, "No." And about 10, 15 minutes again, they called. "Yes, God showed the vision." They did that for several times before the evening service. That night in the service, it was a marvelous great service. Now, those laplanders and things coming in, being healed, hundreds after hundreds of them, never even get to the prayer line. If they could even gain, they could just get in the auditorium. They could stand way back there. You could see clashes and sticks flying. And they could throw down their coats that they was packing them on, walking out. Do you hear that, friends? That they just wanted to see it done. That's all they know God was there. Why can't we do that? Is the prophet saying that in Deben today? Why can't we throw away our clashes? Why can't we throw away our witches? Why can't we throw away our spectacles? Why can't we throw away that sickness and affliction? Why can't we do that? Why can't we have that simple faith? If we would be so trying to figure things out, it would happen right here the same way. God is not respectful persons, he just respect the faith. God doesn't heal you on the merits of your salvation. He heals you on the merits of your faith. Much more could have been said, but time failed us. Seven minutes to 12, I managed to catch my time, pastor come. I want you to play quietly. That's the matter with the people. You have to close your eyes. You don't need to watch who is saying what. Look here, church, I say, you up here, you see pastor, the matter with the people. You close your eyes and you lift your hands to God. Just be quiet, just be quiet, be well taught. Can you stop glopping, clapping your hands? Just close your eyes. The prophet says you must give thanksgiving when it's over. You have to hear what is being said, friends. Keep your eyes closed. Keep your eyes closed. Keep playing for me, that raise the volume a bit, especially that. The Holy Spirit is here. Just raise your hands. Switch off the camera, brother. Just go and cut that part, you can only just give it to the pastor. You lift your hands, just come. If you are a Christian enough, you can walk forward quietly, reverently and lift your hands right at the altar if you want to receive the Holy Spirit. Yes, he's here. Take away that starchiness, brother. Take away that starchiness, sister. Come forward in the name of Jesus Christ. Walk on your foot there. I am challenging in the name of Jesus, Deben people. What's the matter with you? What's the matter with you? What's the matter with you, sister? What's the matter with you, children of God? This altar is not for black people. I said, "This place is not for black people." Why can't we just heal ourselves? You're busy opening eyes to see. You have no reason to do that. You have no reason to do that. Your duty is to listen, be obedient. Obedience is better than sacrifice. I know there are people who are supposed to be walking to the platform here. I know there are people, men and women, who are supposed to bury their pride and come forward and ask God to revive your spirit. The prophet said, "What's the matter with you Canadians? You are so starchy and you will not have a revival." What's the matter with you, Deben? In Ezekiel it said, "A new heart and a new spirit." Take away from you a stone heart. Take away that stone heart and receive the heart of flesh that you receive the word of God. I rebuke that coldness in the name of Jesus Christ. Take away that stone heart, sister, that stone heart. I have caught the spirit, I have identified the spirit. No wonder you can't scream, no wonder you can't have tongues, no wonder you can't have tears, no wonder you can't say amen, no wonder you can't roll on the floor. Take away from you, Deben people, a stone heart and receive the heart of flesh. Take away that stone heart. I speak this by the Holy Spirit. I speak this by commandment. I speak this by permission. I speak this by leadership. I speak this by the anointing of the Holy Ghost. I speak this by revelation. Take away that stone heart, cast it away. If you don't do that, when are you going to do it? When are you going to weep? When are you going to have the monus bench? When are we going to have holy rollers? When are we going to speak in tongues? When are we going to see visions in the touch? Return you back to the Lord. Return back to the altar. Return back to weeping. Return back. Cry out to God to revive us. Get another mic, brother. You come. Yes, you pray like that. Your rest is complete. You will not rest and things will not be well for you until you come to this. You shall receive power after the Holy Ghost is come upon you. You shall be my witnesses, beginning in Deben to the other most parts of South Africa. Beginning in Deben, to beginning in Deben, beginning in Deben, beginning in Deben. We are no longer in Jerusalem, we are here today. You shall be my witness, you shall receive power. You take my word as your brother. You take my word. If you can, if you can by the mercies of God, come forward, we want to join hands and pray together. If you can, take my word as your brother. Quickly at the back there, I want you to come forward. Just come here. If you don't want, that's up to you and God. Let's all stand to those that are at the altar. Give room for people, let's all stand and come forward here. I want us to join hands. I want to pray the prayer of faith, that God will do something. Let's do it reverently, quickly, don't take them, remove the stand and the camera there. Come here, I want us to join hands together. Pastor, let's join hands. Let's go to the people. I want to pray for you. If you can believe you receive the Holy Ghost right now, I know he's here. Just have conduct with one another. Let's bury our pride. That's the matter, I have caught the spirit, that's pride. That's pride. No wonder we can't move any further. We are not willing. The prophet said convinced, then concerned. Are we willing to have a revival? Or is the pastor's burden only? Why can't you share the burden of the pastor? Are you willing? Deben people, are you willing to die? Let us pray. Oh gracious heavenly Father, we thank you this afternoon. You said, "They shall lay hands on the sick, they shall recover." And our heart is desires will be given, oh God. And I pray as our hands upon each other. We pronounce healing to our bodies. I cast out every spirit in the name of Jesus. I cast away every disease. I cast away every coldness, every spell in the name of Jesus. Every backsliding condition. May these people, oh God heavenly Father, may you visit this church mightily with the move of the Holy Ghost. May you take away the stone heart and give us the heart of flesh that you receive of your word, oh God heavenly Father. You promised in Ezekiel, "A new heart and a new spirit will I give you that you receive my word." We pray heavenly Father, that you be merciful. We pray heavenly Father, that you be gracious even to us, oh God. We shake the nest, we shake ourselves in the name of Jesus Christ. We come out from our selfishness ideas. We come out, oh God, from our pride. We bury you in Christ in the name of Jesus. Help us to be children, help us to have childlike faith, oh God. Heavenly Father, we just act upon to that which is being said, to that which is being preached, oh God heavenly Father. Oh hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. We receive, we receive, we receive a revival in the name of Jesus. We receive our healing, hallelujah. We receive the Holy Ghost in the name of Jesus, hallelujah. We receive the backslider back to church, back to the house of God, hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you blessed Jesus, hallelujah. Thank you Jesus. Blessed be your holy name. Blessed be the name of Jesus, hallelujah. Thank you Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Jesus pray. Sing for that, brother. Jesus pray. Yes. Hallelujah. He is breaking principities. He is breaking that charness. He is breaking that selfishness idea. He is breaking principities and powers. Hallelujah. 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 Receive your visitation in the name of Jesus. Receive your visitation. Receive the Holy Ghost. Open your heart. Jesus pray. Every fera. For his s- me- I want you to sing with me and say. Beri zalé vtereka. Varei beri zalé vtereka. Oh, kavarei, Jesus will meet you. Oh, beri zalé vtereka. Jesus will meet. Only Jesus. every pain. Because the blessed when I know the Lord is mine. Oh, bless me now, my Savior. Yes. Oh, ble- Yes, the Holy Ghost is working. Bless me now, my Savior. Savior, Savior. Let's all close our eyes. I need. Oh. Oh, Lord, I need you. Oh, bless me now, my Savior. Oh, bless me now, my Savior. If I can. Oh, bless me now, my Savior. If I can. Bless me now, my Savior. If I can. Oh, bless me. Oh, bless me now. Hallelujah. Blessed be the name of Jesus. I can. Till. Bless me, oh my Savior. Oh, bless me now. Bless me, my Savior. I can. Till. Touch me, oh my Savior. Oh, touch me now. Touch me, my Savior. I can. Can't you? Heal me, oh my Savior. Oh, bless me now. Heal me, my Savior. I can. I can't you? Oh, heal me now, my Savior. Oh, heal. Heal me now. Heal me, my Savior. I can. I can't you? Oh, bless me, oh my Savior. Oh, bless me now. Now, my Savior. I can't you? Oh, bless me, oh my Savior. Oh, bless me now. Bless me, my Savior. Can't you? Oh, I need you. I need you. Oh, I need you. Oh, I need you. Oh, bless me now. Bless me, my Savior. I can't you? Oh, touch me, oh my Savior. Oh, touch me now. Touch me, my Savior. I can't you? Oh, change me, oh my Savior. Oh, change. Change me now. Now, my Savior. I can't you? Oh, bless me, oh my Savior. Oh, bless me now. Bless me, my Savior. I can't you? Oh, touch me, oh my Savior. Oh, touch me now. Touch me, my Savior. I can't you? I need you. Oh, I need you. Oh, I need you. Oh, bless me now, my Savior. I can't you? Oh, bless me, oh my Savior. Oh, bless me now. Bless me, my Savior. I can't you? Oh, bless me, oh my Savior. Oh, bless me now. I can't you? Oh, my Savior. Oh, bless me now. Now, my Savior. I can't you? Bless me, oh my Savior. Oh, bless me now, my Savior. My Savior. I can't you? Oh, Savior. Oh, bless me now. Now, my Savior. I can't you? Oh, bless me, oh my Savior. Oh, bless me now. Now, my Savior. I can't you? Till. Oh, Vahiz. Your name. You are the overravah. Your name. You are the mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. Ready. Your name. You are the overravah. Your name. You are the over samah. Your name. You are the mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. Ready. But you're the mighty warrior. Your name. You are the mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. But you're the mighty warrior. Is your name. You are the mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. Ready. But you're the mighty warrior. Your name. You are the mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. Ready. But you're the mighty warrior. Your name. You are the overravah. Your name. You are the overravah. Your name. You are the mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. Might in battle. Might in healing the sick. Might in supplying your needs. Might in providing. Might in every situation. Oh, come on, let's close our eyes. Just softly. You don't know how it is to me. In moments like this, I want you to know the Holy Spirit is here. The only way you can help yourself is to follow instructions. If I tell you anything, you do it. Let's close our eyes. I think everyone can hear English. If you are a Japanese and you want interpretation, we can do that. Let's close our eyes. As Vala mentioned. It is very much so, cannot be so. Jesus said. Oh, may she. At Jesus' name. Today. I feel led to pray just for few people more. Just keep your eyes closed. Jesus. Oh, may she. You can sing for us. And pastor, I'm not coming back to the pulpit. Hallelujah. Here is a day. Oh, bless me. Jesus is.
Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Vahiz. Me too. Is me. Ah, she. Me too. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Me too. Is me. Yesterday. She. Oh, Meche. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Me too. Is me. Oh, me. Oh, me. Is me. Yes, I say. Oh, me too. Is me. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Is me. Oh, me. Oh, me too. Is me. Yes, I say. Me too. Me too. Is me. Oh, Meche. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Vahiz. Me too. Is me. Yes, I say. Yes, I say. Oh, Meche. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Zasne. Vahiz. Me too. Is me. Hallelujah! She. Oh, Meche. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Me too. Oh, me. Oh, me too. Is me. Oh, me. Me too. Is me. Ah, she. Me too. She. Zasne. Oh, Meche. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Vahiz. Me too. Is me. Oh, me. Oh, me too. Is me. Yes, I say. Me too. Me too. Is me. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Me too. Today. Oh, Meche. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Vahiz. Me too. Is me. Yesterday. She. Zasne. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Oh, me. She. Is me. Oh, me. Oh, me too. Is me. Yes, I say. Me say. Me too. Is me. Oh, Meche. Oh, Meche. Ah, she. Me too. Is me. As far. Oh, say. Ma, kateka. Me too. Every day, every day. Every hour, every hour. You are faithful. Every day, every day. Every hour, every. You are faithful, Jesus. You are faithful. You are faithful, Lord. Oh, every day. Every hour. Savior! You are faithful, Jesus. You are faithful. You are Masua. 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 Oh, say. Ma, kateka. Ah, she. Oh, every day. Every day. Every hour. Every hour. You are faithful, Jesus. Ah, faithful. Oh, Masua. Savior! Masua. Masua. Oh, say. Ma, kateka. Kateka. Ma, kateka. She. Amalanga. Amalanga. We take a little. She. Every day. Every hour. Hallelujah! You are faithful, Jesus. Oh, you are faithful, Lord Jesus. You are faithful. Oh, every day. Yeah? Oh, just raise your hands and sing. Yes, you are faithful, Jesus. Oh, you are faithful, Lord! You are faithful. You are faithful. Oh, just sing before we can close this morning. Hallelujah! Oh, just raise your hands and wave it unto the Lord. Every hour, Jesus. Oh, you are faithful to the Lord. Yes, you are. You are faithful. Oh, you are faithful, Lord. Oh, you never faked it, Lord! Oh, Masua. Oh. Oh, say, oh, say, she. Ma, kateka. You are Masua. You are Masua. Oh. Ma, kateka. Ma, kateka. Oh, every day. Every day. Every hour. Oh, he's making us so much. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Light at the point of your need. Hallelujah! You are faithful. Hallelujah! The will is bound, no one is closed. We're seeing no last but a course. And then after that, we ask our precious Pastor Clinton. Happy to have him with us to come and dismiss. Hallelujah! Humble thyself. Hallelujah! Sing it a few times and Pastor Clinton can come and dismiss us this morning. Humble yourself. Before the Lord. He will lead you. Oh, my brother, if you. Humble yourself. I hope. He will lead you. He will lead you. Lead you up. He will lead you. He will lead you up. If you want. Yourself. Before the Lord. Yes, he. Leads you up. He will lead you. He will lead you up. He will lead you up. He will lead you up. If you want. Humble yourself. Oh. He will lead you up. He will lead you. Lead you up. He will lead you up. He will lead you up. Hallelujah! Oh. Humble yourself. Oh. Yes, he. Leads you up. Hallelujah! Praise him. Amen. Shalom, great. Lord Jesus, as we humbled before in your presence. Lord, we thank you, God, for your visitation this morning. Thank you, Lord. Can feel the presence of God. Feel the Holy Spirit move amongst us. And I pray, Lord, for our dear Pastor Lloyd, Father. Send him down. Holy ghost, power and angelize him from power from above. Father, indeed, it was a blessing. I believe, Lord, every brother and sister, Lord, that was touched by your word. Touched by the Spirit. Father, I just pray, God, Father, that you undertake to receive one of us, Lord. Even I pray for our dear Pastor Rodney, Lord, for reigning. Oh, yes. Blessing in his congregation, the laity, Father. Even I pray, God, Father, even for this afternoon service. Blessed, Lord. Let your Holy Spirit, Lord, come with anointing once more, Lord, and move freely amongst us. Lord, even as your words, Lord, in two or three, Lord, get in your midst. You are in our presence. Father, indeed, we felt the presence this morning. Father, I just pray, God, Father, for every need. Every, Lord, desire, Lord, I believe, Lord, has been fulfilled. Lord, we know, Lord, that you've touched each and every one of us this morning, Father. I believe, Lord, if we come receiving, we go blessed. Lord, indeed, everyone that leave this place can say like the two that walk down the maze. Then their hearts burdened us as the word of the Lord was spoken to us this morning. Father, we thank you, God, the acts of the Holy Spirit, Lord. We can see the evidence. We can see, Lord, the word moving freely amongst us. Lord, this is a time, the bright needs to shine. This is a time, Lord, that we've got to be united in one mind, one accord, in one spirit. Father, help us, Lord, to, Lord, achieve this, Lord. I thank you once again, Lord, even as we dismiss one from another, Lord. I pray, God, that we take the word of God and take the Spirit with us. Until we meet again, Lord, we ask the mercies of Jesus' name. Amen. Hallelujah! Amen. And all God's people says? All God's people says? Praise the Lord, amen. We want to say thank you, Pastor Lloyd. Amen, we certainly appreciate the presence of God. Amen, the move of God. We thank him for what he's done. We thank him for what he's doing. And we'll thank him for what he's going to do. Hallelujah! Praise his wonderful name. We certainly appreciate the presence of God. The Lord richly bless you. Pray for our precious pastor. God give him grace and strength. Restore his virtue. Hallelujah! And we'll gather back here at four o'clock. At four o'clock sharp, we will gather here to start the second service, the last service. Amen, so just come expecting, just come prayed up. Amen. And God will do the rest. Hallelujah. Amen, the Lord richly bless you, take you back safely, little short break, have your lunch and come back refreshed, hallelujah, and we rejoice in the presence of God, hallelujah. So in dismissing, hallelujah, Abraham's blessings are mine, God bless you.